Hello, everybody. I am Krista Boyle and I am the Head of Communications for Cincinnati Public Schools. We are so excited to have you here today for our third Parent Town Hall. I'm going to just go through a couple of quick logistics and then I will turn it over to the superintendent to kick us off. We really are here today to hear from you guys, so we have a presentation that we're going to try to get through as quickly as possible. But we are really excited to have your participation. There are two ways to do that. The first is through the Q and A feature, and I see it looks like we already have three questions waiting, so we'll get to those in a second. And then those will be posted and we will ask some of them live and we'll respond to any unanswered ones after the call. The second option is to ask a question or share a comment live. And we'll just take those in the order that they come in through the Raise Your Hand feature. You just click that. And then you'll be put in queue. You'll receive an invitation to accept that. And then when it's your turn, we'll call your name and you unmute yourself. And if you'd like to turn on your video, that is great, but it is optional. If you have any technical questions, those can be submitted through the chat function. We want to be respectful of everyone's time. We know evenings are busy, and so we will take questions until the end of the hour. And again, if we don't get to all of the questions, those will be shared after the event along with a recording. And so with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Laura Mitchell.
Thank you for your flexibility that you've been demonstrating through this entire pandemic. We are so appreciative of your willingness to work with CPS through this entire situation. So this pandemic has kind of turned our worlds upside down and disrupted our system. And so we are working very hard to make sure that we can provide a high-quality education for your young people. But again, we can't express enough how grateful we are for the work that you've done to support CPS throughout this entire pandemic and through the civil unrest. And so again, thank you so much for being with us. And we want to hear from you. We want to hear your thoughts. We want to hear your questions. This will be the first of many town hall meetings, and so we'll have these town hall meetings throughout the school year as an opportunity for us to really be able to hear from our families and our parents and also to be able to get your great ideas. So come with your questions and your ideas. We are here for you. All right. Thank you. Next slide, please. So there's my big thank you to all of you. Thank you so much. So as we think about the work for the upcoming school year, it will be grounded in three major areas. Health and safety, above all, putting our safety of our young people as well as their families and community members and our staff members will be our top and number one priority. Our second major priority is centered around accelerating student learning. So this isn't about remediation or intervention. It's really about acceleration. We know that our young people weren't with their teachers in a face-to-face situation or their peers. And so we need to accelerate their learning because at the end of the day, there will be life beyond COVID-19. There will be a Cincinnati Public Schools, and we still need to educate our young people. And so we really centered our thoughts around how we accelerate our education for our young people. In addition to equity, and so I will have to say that the board has been visionary and they adopted an equity resolution and a policy some years ago. And so we're working through the implementation of that policy in terms of practices. So a lot more will come as it relates to equity. And speaking of our board members, it's my understanding that we have at least one of our board members with us, our longtime board member Eve Bolton. She is here with us. And so I'll just see if she would like to say a couple of words to our parents this evening.
Just thank you for staying with us at CPS and welcome. And we're going to try to answer as many questions as possible and give us as many ideas as you can so that we can do a great job for you and our kids. But thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Board Member Bolton. All right, on to the next slide. And so I think she was giving me the cue to go faster so that we could hear your questions and your ideas. So it's really relevant to say that we've learned a lot through this entire situation with COVID-19. We've learned a lot about our practices and how we can improve. And so we know that life will continue teaching, so we'll keep learning to improve our processes. Next slide. So I know that you are aware that at the end of June, the board made the decision to open school on the 24th in a blended model, two to three days a week for our students, meaning half of our students would be in session on any given day, which would allow the social distancing. The board was always committed to coming back in early August to make a different decision if needed based upon the data. And so based upon our data as it relates to the city of Cincinnati, confirmed cases, we are going to start in a distance learning format. And we're going to analyze the information that we get from the Health Department on a daily basis. But by September 14th, we want to look to see if we can move to in-face or in-person instruction starting the end of September. We're really interested in doing this because we know that our kids are best with our teachers in our schools, with their peers, with all the services that we have to offer. But we also want to err on the side of caution and make sure that it's safe before we return. Next slide. Thank you. So I love this Bruce Lee quote, "We have learned to be nimble and flexible and agile." And I know that you have been too. And so please just bear with us. There may be instances in which we will make a decision today and maybe two days later we need to change a decision based upon information that's coming from the state or based upon our data as it relates to COVID. So we appreciate your flexibility through all of this. Next slide. So I mentioned that we analyze data on a daily basis. So twice a day, I receive a dashboard from the Health Department in the morning and in the late afternoon. And it will tell me the number of hospitalizations, confirmed cases by neighborhood and by zip code. It will also give an epidemiology curve, which identifies the number of confirmed cases for each day over a period of time. And what we're seeing for the city of Cincinnati is that our system in the community is very unstable. So one day we may be high and then the next day we may be lower, lower, and then jump again. And so it's a very unstable system. And so we're going to look at this data because what we want to see is a trend. So we want to see multiple consecutive days of confirmed cases declining. That's one piece of data that we're looking at. We're also looking at the positivity rate, and we want it to be five to six percent. Right now, we're sitting at 7.7% in the city of Cincinnati. And the positivity rate relates to of the people who are tested, how many actually have confirmed positive cases. And again, we're at 7.7, and we want to be at six, between five and six percent. The third piece of data that we look at is the Ohio's Public Health Advisory System that was produced by the governor. And it has a range of levels, one through four. Yellow being the lowest level, second level is orange, third level is red, and the fourth level is purple. And for a while, we were hovering in the red category, so level three. So we're excited to know that the efforts that have been put in place with throughout the city, they're working. And we're now, we've dropped down to level two, which is orange. So that's a good thing. The fourth data piece that we look at is the number of days it takes to get test results. And so it can range anywhere from three days to 14 days. And so we really want to see it lower than 14 days, be able to know how many people currently really have COVID. And that also informs our trend down. And so those are the four data points that we'll continue to look at as we make decisions to err on the side of caution and keeping in mind the best interest and safety of our kids, our community, families, and our staff members. And I believe now I will turn it over to Krista.
That is correct. Thank you. So you can go ahead and go to my first slide, please. So we really just wanted to take a second to say that we heard feedback from our parents and families. We did focus groups and a lot of outreach. And we know that as we head into the fall, consistency is really critical. So I just wanted to outline a couple of the things that we're doing. At the district level, you'll continue to receive the weekly superintendent newsletters. Our Back to School site is a great source of information and it is always open. We have started doing, especially with our big board meetings where we're making decisions, we're making sure that we are sending community letters out to parents and staff and all of our stakeholders. We will continue to do robocalls because we know some families prefer robocall over email. And then we also encourage you to follow us on social media. At a school level, principals will be doing regular communication on a cadence that works for their individual school that'll include newsletters and robocalls as well as interim updates. And then teachers will be communicating via Schoology, which is, we know there was, there were some questions about how can I expect, you know, immediate information and what platform will that come from? So that will be standardized. We also were really excited to do these town halls and we will continue to do them throughout the year. So with that, I believe I turn it over to Sarah Trimble Oliver, who is unmuted.
Good evening, CPS families. We very much look forward to the day when we can welcome our students back into our buildings because we know that in-person learning is best for them academically and socially emotionally. And when we do, we will make sure it's the safest environment possible. This doesn't mean a zero-risk environment, but we have taken the CDC guidelines that were issued back in May and adopted them into our district safety plan. It's important to note that the CDC recommendations aren't requirements for schools in the U.S. or in Ohio, but at CPS, we are implementing every single one of them. These safety precautions do come at a heavy financial cost and they will impact school operations. We can be sure that school will not look the same as it did before we closed down in the spring. Now, if I had to boil down the top four themes of the safety plan, they would be these. And these are in order of most important. Number one is the six-foot social distancing. Number two is masks. Masks will be required for all individuals in our buildings. Number three is hand hygiene. And number four is cleaning and disinfecting. We also need to ask for your help in part of our safety plan. We need some help monitoring symptoms. Please check your child's temperature each morning before leaving for school. And if your child does have symptoms, keep them at home. This is how we keep each other safe now. You can go to the next slide, Dawn. We also want to ask for your help in making sure that you have arranged methods for your children to get home if they do become ill during the, during the school day. This will help us to isolate individuals with symptoms and prevent the spread of COVID in our buildings. We're also going to have temperature screenings in all of our schools. And all schools will have a school nurse and a designated isolation area for anyone who may have symptoms during the day. We have a system to track confirmed cases and we have a confirmed case protocol. So if we do get a confirmed case of COVID in our schools, we will follow that protocol, which consists of isolating the individual, determining if there were any close contacts, cleaning and disinfecting the affected area, and consideration of a room or a school closure if that is necessary. It also includes notification letters. What you'll see on the next slide is an example of what a classroom might look, look like with six-foot distancing. This is going to be a hard habit for all of us to get used to. It's going to affect many parts of the school day, but it is the top most important safety precaution according to the medical experts that we've consulted. You also can see a picture of the classroom cleaning kit, and that will be provided by the district to every classroom. So as I mentioned, we have been consulting with the Cincinnati Health Department and Children's Hospital. And they have reviewed and given input into our district safety plan. And so we are very grateful to have their expertise as we plan to open our schools in the safest manner possible. And now the presentation will be turned over to Tiana Amat.
Good evening, families and community members. I'm here to talk a little bit about distance learning. Next slide, please. We believe in three steps, expectations, preparedness, and practice will help with a safe and smart start. And we would like to do that through orientations with our families and students. So through expectations, we want to start to build positive relationships. We will give out handbooks to our students and families. You will also be able to get your child's schedule and syllabus if they're at the high school. I want to highlight the next two bullets around attendance and grading. It is different than what we did in fourth quarter. We will be taking attendance the start of the school year. So if your child is in academic session, Google Class, it is required to log on. And we're moving back to our normal grade, grading system, so no longer pass or fail. We will do our normal grading system and provide feedback. And we want to remove all obstacles and make sure our students are prepared and ready to be successful in the start of the school year. So we are distributing devices and making sure that students are connected. We will also provide textbooks and instructional supplies and art supplies that they can use at home and make sure that they have their passwords for Power School and Schoology and clearly communicate our office hours. So if there's any assistance needed, that they know how to contact the adults in the building. We are currently developing videos so students can practice at home how to access Power School and Schoology, how to upload assignments and check grades, and also how to log on to Google Meet. There are four areas, building relationships, diagnosing learning, grades and office hours, and acceleration of learning and using tools to support these areas. So the building relationships is definitely through our Google Meet or Schoology conferencing. For diagnosed learning, we currently use MAP as a benchmark measure three times a year. And we will be able to do that the start of this school year. The teachers will be able to proctor the exam virtually. Again, the grades will be posted into Power School, so students and families will have access. And we will use accelerated learning. We will use Schoology as our learning platform. The last two slides are just sample schedules of what a day may look like. So the first one is an elementary schedule. So there are items on there such as their academic core areas, specials, office hours. And then you also see an opportunity for self-directed learning. And those are opportunities where students can do assignments and possibly have support with teachers. In the high school schedule, which is the next slide, we just broke down the bell schedule. So in the example for the high school schedule, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, you see here bells one through three. Wednesdays and Fridays, four through six. We also have opportunities for advisory and office hours and self-directed learning. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Bunty to come on up. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you for being with us tonight. I want to spend a little bit of time talking about students with disabilities and also our English learners. Next slide, please. And then next slide, please. So we know that students with disabilities have very unique needs and those are highly individualized. So during the week of the 17th, which is next week, and also during the week of the 24th, if you have a child who has an IEP, you will be contacted by your child's intervention specialist or an IEP team in which you will work with the team to best determine the services and the ways in which those services will be delivered during our time of distance learning. So please know that any assistive technology that your child currently uses in school in our face-to-face will be available for your child in the distance learning environment as well in addition to alternative communication devices. And next slide, please. For our students who are English learners, our itinerary staff will still be available to support them as well as our paraprofessionals who work to interpret and translate. With both of these groups of learners, please know that these are individual decisions and that we will work very closely with you, our families, to make sure that all needs are met. Next slide, please. So as we've talked about the physical safety of our students, it's also really important to acknowledge the emotional safety of our students as well. So please know that we will have school social workers on site. We will also have, and they will interact virtually with students in a distance learning model. All of our staff members on Thursday, August 20th, will go through social and emotional training so that they will know how to support students in both distance learning models and, and the blended models. And there will be a video series, but especially designed by our Children's Hospital in conjunction with Mind Peace and CPS to help support families and our high school students. Next slide, please. And we also know that we are learning all different types of new behaviors, from mask wearing to social distancing to frequently washing our hands. And so we recognize that all of us, as we're learning them, it's helpful to have a guide. All students will receive the Student COVID-19 Guide. This will be reviewed with them during their distance learning time in preparation for our returns when we can all see each other face-to-face. So these will be made available at the orientation. And now I would like to introduce you to Shauna Murphy, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Bunty. Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all well. I want to take a moment to talk to you about two topics. Next slide, please. The first topic is childcare, as I see in the Q and A. And I've heard from several parents that this is somewhat of a concern. And so we have been working with several community partners. You see them listed in the second bullet for the past several weeks on how we might be able to provide childcare in their locations. And they have agreed to work with us on being able to provide these opportunities for both before and after-school care as well as full-day care. We are hoping to have this information finalized by the end of this week and able to share with you more concrete details about what that looks like. The second piece I would like to share with you about is around athletics. Next slide, please, and extracurricular activities. So in alignment with our decision to be in remote learning, distance learning, our district has decided to transition to an internal practice during this time for our high school students. Our junior high athletics for the fall season has been suspended, but we will reassess this decision prior to the start of the winter and even spring seasons. High school fall activities will be reassessed prior to the September 28th date, which is in alignment with our virtual learning. The number one priority, of course, is the health and safety of all of our staff, all of our students. And we understand that participating in sports and extracurricular activities is extremely important to the development of our young people. And so our athletic directors and our coaches have agreed to provide opportunities that will allow our students to be highlighted, especially for those who have aspirations to play at the collegiate level. This is including but not limited to assisting the young people with creating highlight tapes or huddles, live-streamed events, and communication with college coaches. And then finally, just to be really brief about other activities and extracurriculars, there will be opportunities for those to be done virtually, but what activities will be decided on a school-by-school basis? At this time, I think I am passing it on to our attorney, Dan Hoying.
Thanks, Shauna. Good evening. My name's Dan Hoying. I'm the district's lawyer. Happy to speak with you this evening and very anxious and ready to get the 2020-21 school year underway. I just have a brief update for you from the board's policy committee. The policy committee has been at work this summer, working on a board policy relating to masks. It is like, it is about as broad a policy as you're going to see from a school district. It requires masks for all students and staff during the school day. And there are only narrow exceptions for when students are eating and drinking and otherwise able to be socially distant. The other policies that will be suspended for the 2020-21 school year include the school visitor policy. Visitors are likely to be very limited and restricted in our schools during this school year. The travel policy, we're restricting student field trips and well as staff travel. The ADE EDA S program for students who are suspended or expelled will be temporarily suspended for the 2020-21 school year. And so schools will look significantly different this school year. But again, we're excited to get the school year underway. Thanks. And now Jeremy Gallahue from our Technology Department will be next.
Thanks, Dan, and hello to, well, everyone. So tonight, we're going to provide some quick updates on the district's technology plans that will hopefully answer some of the outstanding questions you may have. The first thing we want to make sure you are aware of is that CPS does have and will be providing a device to every enrolled CPS student. After this week and next, we will have had an opportunity to pick the, you will have had an opportunity to pick up those devices at every school location for second through 12th grade students. You can see the remaining scheduled dates on your screen now, and you can always find it posted on the CPS website. We will also begin distributing iPads for the pre-K through first-grade students on August 24th. And then we will continue to offer options for picking up additional devices until every student has one. Also, to answer one very popular question, we will be offering a parent and student technology helpline that will be up and running during the first week of September. This hotline will be available to assist you, grandparents, caregivers, the students directly with everything from how to turn on the laptop to how to connect to your Wi-Fi, log into email, or Schoology. And last but not least, the Connect Our Students Free Internet Program is available to all eligible families at all CPS schools beginning last week. Eligible in this case just means that you have a student enrolled at CPS and you live within the Cincinnati Bell service area. Now, there are two ways to sign up for the service. The first is to go to one of the CPS device distribution sites where you'll find a Cincinnati Bell table set up that you can walk up to or pull up to after picking up a device and sign up on the spot. The second is to call and sign up directly at the numbers you see on the screen. And again, these will be available on the CPS website after the meeting. And one very important thing to remember is that your address has to be up to date with CPS so it can be verified as eligible. If you called in last week and were told your address didn't qualify, we apologize for the inconvenience. We did find an issue during the first week of the program that caused problems with a relatively small number of addresses, but we corrected the issue. It should be good to go now. We would just ask that you please try again this week. And of course, if you do experience any issues, please absolutely let us know. So with that, I will turn it back over to Krista.
Thanks, Jeremy. So we have received many questions. Thank you guys very much for those. There's one, a couple that we're going to address through chat, and then we'll return to the live questions. The first is that we received a couple of questions about is it possible to go to virtual student orientations? We just, we want everyone to know that we thought that perhaps it would make sense for students to have the opportunity in small groups to meet their teachers and pick up materials, but that we also have heard from many parents and staff members about concerns with that, even under a very safe plan. So we are in the process of pooling together some communication. And within the next day, we'll be able to share details, final details, about what orientation will look like and how that will work. So please be on the lookout for that information, and we really appreciate everyone's input. There also, Tiana, there are several questions about Cincinnati Digital Academy. I'm going to ask them in kind of two parts. The first is about the deadline and if it's okay to still enroll. And then also, is it okay to enroll later if we go to the blended learning model? So that's kind of the first.
I've been in communication with CDA, and we have extended the deadline because we did information sessions the end of last week. So we wanted to provide families an opportunity to take some time to process information to make that decision. What I will say is that since we're going to distance learning, What I will say is that since we're going to distance learning, parents can make the decision to stay at their current school or if they enrolled in CDA and would like to go back to their current high school, they can do that. After five weeks and it's decided that we are going back to in-person and parents still want the virtual option, they can transfer into CDA at a later date as well.
Okay, great. And you actually answered the other part of my question, which is can people go back to their homeschool? So thanks. You read my mind. And then while I have you, there are several questions about when parents and students will receive their students' individual schedule. Can you maybe share a little bit about that as well as a little? I know you talked a little bit about parent orientation, but maybe one more time, what folks can expect to get from that?
Yes. We are looking at the week of the 24th, and you will get specific information and details from your school. But at that orientation, you will get the schedules, you will get any supplies and materials, passwords, and handbooks. So that will happen the week of the 24th. The staff come back, the teachers come back on the 17th, so on Monday.
Great. Thank you. Okay, great. So let's go to the folks who have raised their hand. Sarah, you are first in queue. If you would like to unmute yourself, we'd love to hear your question. Okay, Sarah, I'm going to unmute for you. We should be able to hear you now.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. This question is probably for Dan. And it is as follows. So if a student with a COVID-related illness is unable to attend either physically or virtually, because let's say they're on a ventilator or something, how are you going to handle their absences? Will they be able to make something up? Is there a truancy standard? Are they going to be unexcused? How's that going to work?
Okay, so Krista, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I think the question was, it was a little bit quiet, but I think the question, how are absences handled? And especially for a student who's vulnerable. The absences policy will without a doubt be updated this year. COVID-related absences for a quarantine or for an exposure or for actual symptoms would all be treated as excused absences. We certainly may have students who have even more susceptibility and wouldn't be able to participate even necessarily in a traditional kind of remote process. But that's not new to us. We have had students in all kinds of scenarios that have had, you know, all kinds of different illnesses that they've dealt with through the years. And it's not, you're not truant if you're in that kind of a scenario. We would work out a medical plan or a plan to provide whatever education we can to that child, but it's not a truancy situation if that's what you're concerned. Thanks for your question.
And would they have to have a 504 modification? Or is it just going the excused absent route? And, you know?
No, it's possible. Again, if something about a child's condition prevents him from participating, you know, in education with, with that child's regular education peers, then yeah, you might, we might have a need to update a 504 plan or create a 504 plan, might have a need to look at an IEP. But again, these are not new scenarios for CPS. We have lots of medically fragile students that we educate, you know, inside and outside of the COVID. So again, not, not something that we would be unprepared for.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Great. Our next question comes from Melanie, I'm sorry, Melody Gordon. You'd like to unmute?
I have a couple of questions. Will teachers be, if you want to, such as given remote learning, if we're teaching in a class, the whole class is there, and what child needs a little bit more help? Will the teachers be dedicating any time to that?
Melody, Melody, I'm really sorry, but you're, we're having a lot of trouble hearing you. I don't, I think maybe there's some background noise or maybe try your question again.
All right. Can you guys hear me now?
Yep, that's much better. Thank you.
Okay, so in the event that we do small group learning, will there be any one-on-one sessions? I know the classes will be taught as a group, I'm assuming. Will the teachers take any time out to specifically cater to that child? If they need help, like how is that incorporated in the plan? Also, I wanted to act, you guys are still focusing in on some things and saying some things will be finalized as a week or so. Are we moving a bit too fast? Can some dates be pushed back? Those are a lot of questions I keep hearing. Are these days eligible to be pushed back? I mean, we all want to get to school. We want to get there safely. But are these dates flexible or are they set in stone? Also, will CPS be held liable if a child or student contracts COVID while on CPS property? I mean, if it's determined that it was there. I figured I'll just go ahead and throw that question, just to be clear.
Okay, so the, go ahead, Tiana. Yep.
I'll take the question on instruction and small group learning. There is a capacity through school deconferencing for breakout sessions. So there will be opportunities for small group or one-on-one. We have reading specialists and intervention specialists and ESL, and sometimes they do small group pullouts. So we do have that in the plan.
Okay, and that would be for regular children, not a child that has an IEP or anything? It's just a regular child who's just maybe falling behind or struggling in a specific area?
And then Melody, in terms of dates, and then I'll let Tiana answer the third question. In terms of dates, we know that there's a lot happening, and it is sort of full court press toward school, but we just really feel like it is important that we get started and get the year underway. And we'll make sure that we bring everybody along with us. So thank you for that question. Dan, do you want to talk a little bit about liability?
Sure. So we get that question sometimes, and there've been some, I know schools or districts that have put out liability waivers. I just want to say, being with this team, the liability or not of the school district is not the primary, our primary focus is to get kids back to school reasonably and safely. And if we're doing that, the liability is not my concern. We're not going to be asking parents to sign a liability waiver or anything like that. But I do think it's important to attention and to participate in forums like this to know that there is some risk about returning your child to school. And if your child is particularly vulnerable or susceptible for some reason or lives in a household with somebody who's susceptible, you know, my opinion is you should be thinking about some of the digital options that are available. That being said, we are making decisions right alongside folks from Children's Hospital, consistent with what the Ohio Department of Health is recommending, consistent with what the CDC from the federal government is recommending. So our primary concern is, is again, getting kids back to school as safely as we can. I'll take care of the liability issues. Thanks for your question.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Melody. So our next question is from Lakeisha Beeman. Lakeisha, if you want to unmute yourself? Okay, I'm going to, oh, there you go. Great. We should be able to hear you.
Can you hear me okay? Okay. Well, I have a three-year-old and a four-year-old. My three-year-old has, this will be her first year. And like, how are they going to be doing it for like pre-K students? Because I have two pre-K students. I also have a middle schooler and two high schoolers. So how are they going to work with that if I choose not to take them to school? Because they have the tablets that were issued to them, but I just don't feel safe with having them there in the opening of the school.
So for preschool, teachers are available, and they will be doing lessons, and we have a digital curriculum and passing out iPads. I would recommend if you go to our CPS YouTube, a site, there are preschool videos. We do a lot more with videos at that age. So they've gone on virtual field trips, done circle time and morning meetings. And a lot of that is through videos. So you can check out our YouTube videos, but we will provide a schedule for our preschool students as well.
Okay. Now, will they have to go in? Because that was one of my questions was, will they have to go in and meet the teachers? Or do we do that over virtual as well?
We are planning video options for a virtual opportunity to meet your child's teacher.
Okay, okay. And all that information will also be sent out?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's basically everything I needed to know, was just the safety for the kids. That's majority it.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you all for answering my questions.
Have a good evening. Claudia, thank you. Claudia, you are next if you would like to unmute yourself. Okay, I'm going to unmute. Oh, no. I think we lost her. Okay, Maggie. If you would like to unmute yourself, and then Claudia, I see, we'll come back to you after Maggie.
Hi.
Hi, Maggie.
Hi. This actually kind of goes right off of the last question. At the end, my daughter's in pre-K as well. And at the end of the five weeks, if everybody ends up going back to school, if we don't feel that it's safe for her to go back in person, then there's no digital option for pre-K? If we go back in person, would we have to withdraw her?
There is not, if the pre-K program is following the same schedule as K through 12. So you are correct. CDA does not have a preschool option there.
Okay, so we would have to end up withdrawing her if we did not want her to go back in person, like at the end of the five weeks?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks, Maggie. Okay, Claudia, do you want to try to unmute yourself? Yes, you're breaking up a little bit, but we can hear you. Claudia, we're, we can't hear you. I think it sounds like we have a bad connection. So why don't you, if you'd like to put your question in the Q and A or through the chat, we will make sure that we can get back to you. So I think our next person in queue, Charles Alexander.
Yes. Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, yeah. I have a question. I have a third and a sixth grader. And when they start on the virtual, this really was low fourth quarter. Now, my sons, they, they more advanced. How are they going to do that? Are they going to start to see where everybody's at? Or they got a curriculum that they're just going to do and stick with that? And people going to be left behind? Or, or my kids are going to be bored trying to do something that they already know?
That's a great question. They will diagnose learning. So they will take basically a skills assessment to see where they are and where the gaps are, and then work individually with students to try to fill those gaps or accelerate the learning for them.
Okay, that was, that was my main thing. Okay, got you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Susan, there are several questions in the chat about social, emotional learning and kind of mental health as we think about our kids being in a distance learning model. Again, do you mind just sharing a little bit more about how we think about that?
Sure. So we are really fortunate that our mental health providers will be providing support for our students who qualify for those services through a telehealth network during our distance learning situation. Also, our school's social workers will be providing support virtually to small groups of students who may need additional support. And our teachers will be doing morning meeting groups to check in with students. So if parents have concerns about their child or need additional help in this area, please reach out to your child's teacher. And then your child's teacher can help connect you with the services that are available to.
That's great. Thank you. And then while I have you, quick question. Will 504 plans be addressed the same as IEPs?
Yeah, so 504 plans are a little bit different, but we, teachers will be reaching out to families who have children, who have 504 plans. We recognize that some of the accommodations that are in those 504 plans may need to shift a little bit in the distance learning environment. So yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, let's go back to our live questions. Jillian, you are next if you would like to unmute yourself.
Hi, I just had a quick question about technology. I was a little worried when I got, picked up my Chromebooks or whatever those top pads are, you know what I mean? Because it says that, you know, if your kid cracks the screen or they break it, then we have to pay for it. And I was wondering if there was any kind of insurance that we could provide, like pay for? And my other question was if we would be able to purchase additional chargers?
So thanks for that question. First, regarding the damages, that's in reference to abuse of damages. If there's accidental damages, the district does have insurance, and we do cover essentially the accidental type damage to devices. That's really in reference to, you know, abusive damages, dropping the device without properly using the case that was provided, things like that. And then.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jeremy. Thanks, Jillian. So our next question, Dominique Sparks, if you would like to unmute yourself.
Okay, yes. I just had a couple of questions. The first one was about the online logging in for the, like the September. You said you would allow families to come in and be taught how to do the login and everything like that. How is that going to, like, does that mean school is not really officially starting until sometime in September? Because I don't want her to, I don't have, she's starting first grade, so I don't, I don't really know what's going with everything. So we don't have the, yet, and they said until the end of August.
So parent orientations will be the week of August 24th, so that same first week of school, and the same time that there will be student orientations. And then I think the September date, Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong, is for the hotline. So we also want to put a hotline in place so for incoming questions. So that will be sort of an additional support that'll be available in September. But definitely that first week of school, the parent and student orientations will cover technology use. Tiana, if I said any of that incorrectly, please jump in.
No, that is correct.
Okay, thanks. Thanks.
If possible, because I did choose her school, by choosing her school, it was, we chose it for the languages and everything. So last year, you know, at the end, she was only in kindergarten, but she was taking Chinese and everything. And I'm not going to lie, it was very difficult trying to teach her Chinese myself. I don't speak it. So I want to know, how is that going to affect her? Because like I said, you know, the languages and everything was really a big thing of why we chose. why we chose the school and I don't want her to miss out or fall behind on anything because she's not getting it with the teacher or how are they really just gonna handle that?
I think like any other class working, that's why the Google Meet is very important because with the language, being the mouth and listening and pronouncing words and the ability to use visuals, especially for the primary grades. So the teachers are currently being trained on how to use a variety of strategies in a virtual learning environment to help teach those skills.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. I think you all have answered my questions and hope you all have a great evening.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Our next caller, Joseph, if you would like to unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me?
You're a little faint, but yes, we can hear you.
Uh, my question is in relation to the devices. My son goes to Hughes and we actually missed the date to pick up his, his device and I know they do have a makeup date for it, but my question is, he still has the laptop that he received for finishing off the school year this, this, this past quarter? And I was wondering, do we still need to get a new device or can he use a device that he still has from this prior, prior school year?
Thanks for that. And yes, you can use the device that he had from the prior school year.
Okay. And just to... No, I was just about to say so, so he doesn't need to actually have to pick up another one then?
No, the device you have will be fine. But to, to answer your other question, if you did miss your date, the makeup dates are available as well as you can go to any of the future dates for pickup devices on the schedule and be able to get a device there if you missed your date.
Okay, so, so, so you talking about any of the other schools?
Correct.
Okay, okay. That answered my question. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, great. Our next question will be from Constance Mara. If you'd like to unmute yourself? Thank you.
Hi. I have two questions. One is, you know, I'm like many CPS parents working and I'm not sure how we're gonna do this remote thing, so I'm looking for childcare options. But I'm struggling to reconcile the fact that, you know, CPS is okay with setting up these childcare options for our kids and yet we can't send them in person. And I feel like CPS has done a really good job in, you know, implementing safety and illness protocols and a lot of the childcare options that parents are gonna find do not have the same level of rigor in terms of the safety protocols that they've put in place. And I'm just wondering how, how you're reconciling the kids being allowed to go to daycare but not in-person school?
Ms. Constance, thank you for that question. The groups that we have been working with, Society Recreation Commission, the YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, et cetera, they have been doing summer programming, youth programming, and they are following set guidelines that were guidelines that had to be established before they could even open those programs. So they will be following the CDA guidelines for youth development and childcare.
Okay, with the, cause they're, they're allowed to have the larger class sizes than what was gonna be implemented at CPS schools. So it's just, I'm just having a hard time understanding how daycares are okay, but in-person learning at CPS isn't okay. My second question is related to the date of when you're evaluating to return to possibly blended learning, given Hamilton County that has been downgraded to, I think, yellow as of this week, at least to orange, and our numbers are looking a little promising. Is it possible to push up the five weeks instead of evaluating in September, maybe evaluating sooner so that kids can get back to class in person sooner if it looks better?
So yes, it's a fair question. I think the, the intent of setting that date was to really let parents plan and to not be kind of moving all around. So as it stands right now, that, that is the reason for that check-in date and that, and so that, that'll be kind of the next big data check-in. But we appreciate the question.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. So our next question, Jenna Witt. And I may have said your last name wrong, I apologize. If you wanna unmute. Okay, Jenna, I'm gonna unmute you. Oh, there you go. Never mind, you got it. Thanks. Jenna, we should be able to hear you if you wanna ask your question. Okay, I'll tell you what, we will try to come back to you in a minute. Carrie, would you like to ask your question?
I have kids at elementary and high school level, but I am on a waitlist for pre-K. And I know if parents start pulling kids out, will this open up to waitlists for pre-K or not?
If there is a waitlist and students are withdrawing, then there will be availability.
Is that once school starts though? Like, once you get to that five-week mark and people, if we are going back and people decide that it's not safe and at that point they're starting to pull out? Or is this before the start of August 31st?
Uh, this is, we do it throughout the year. So if there's a seat available, we start calling people off the waitlist.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, Jenna, let's try one more time if you wanna unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't get that to work before.
No worries.
So my daughter, and my daughter has a spot in Gambles Preschool, which we are so excited about, but both my husband and I work and so she'll be at daycare while CPS is remote. And I'm, I'm a little concerned that she will lose her spot because we can't do, like, we can't do any required class meetings during the day. We can certainly watch videos and do activities when she's home with us in the evening, but I'm just wondering what flexibility there is for preschool, given that we don't have another digital option.
I'd say definitely working with the principal there and letting her know your situation. As long as you keep her enrolled and some sort of participation, you, you should be okay.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, everybody, we're just about a minute till the top of the hour. That hour went really fast, at least for me. I don't know about you guys. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Amat to close us out. And then just as a reminder, in the next day or so, these will be posted, the recordings will be posted and we'll also start answering, you know, we'll share out a Q and A document. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Krista. Just wanna take this opportunity to thank all the families and community members for coming out and sharing wonderful ideas and pushing our thinking to get better. Here, I wanna share a quote from my favorite poet, so much that my daughter is named after her, but it states here, "Stand up straight and realize who you are, that you tower over your circumstances." And CPS has a long history and tradition of coming out on top and not only doing it through a basic way, but being innovative and coming together as a community. And this is the time that we should all step up and support one another and we have witnessed that over the course of these last few months. So we just wanna take the opportunity to say thank you. We look forward to a successful start of the fall. And again, we had over 300 participants in this call and we look forward to future town hall meetings throughout the school year. So thank you and have a great evening.